Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today's Thursday, January 16, 2020. We appreciate your attendance. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation of Superior Court 2019 Budget Correction for Intergovernmental Agreement, Court Administrator Jason Stevens. Jason.
Good afternoon. I was just here, I guess last month, and Reggie had the chance to introduce me. So I'm glad so soon to see all of you again.
Y'all are causing trouble.
I am causing trouble, I'm so sorry. This relates to, I think you probably have the agenda item in front of you, but the intergovernmental agreement with Hall County that calls for Dawson to pay for 10% of one judicial staff and a law clerk for each of the five judges. Hall County discovered that they had been under billing for quite some time. And once they caught it, Katie, who is our, Katie Mincy is our Deputy Court Administrator of Finance, she and I came over and met with Chairman Thurman to make him aware of the correction that would be needed, and they'd see a different invoice amount. So this budget request is to correct for the under billing by Hall County and to finish out the fiscal year 2019. That fourth quarter invoice should come in the next few weeks.
So y'all are on a different fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
July 1st in Hall County.
Okay.
So they had blessed us for a few years enough charges.
I don't know, how long?
But I did tell them that we didn't want no back billing.
How long, I know you said, you want exactly how many years?
I'll let Katie do that, she's dug into it some.
At least three years that we know of, that we can go back and see as far back as that. There's not been a significant increase at all since what I can tell back from our 2001 software, so.
And what was total amount?
An additional 15,000 amount.
Fifteen too. Which means we'll also have to make an adjustment to the 2020 budget as well.
Yes.
We anticipate that to be around about $5,000.
I was about 30, I had 30 something thousand in my mind, so that's where I got the bid. Yeah, okay.
Questions? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of RFP number 352-19 Sell of Surplus Real Property owned by Dawson County Board of Commissioners. Second rebid results, Purchasing Manager Melissa Paul.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. We, you had requested that an RFP Notice of Sale was released for the five properties remaining that you had originally put out for the first one that we did. On November 18th, we received one offer, that was from Cavalero Holdings LLC of Columbia, Georgia, that's in the amount of $311,111. It's for the approximate property of 77.67 acres tract land, of land that's located along Shell Creek Road north of 718 and west of Burr Creek Road. Just for informational purposes, the Dawson County Tax Assessor's Office values this property at $647,074. And an independent appraisal that we had performed on this by J&amp;T Smith Incorporated valued this property at $1,100,000 on April 8th. So the staff has recommended that the Board of Commissioners consider all three options that they have and to vote on this accordingly as you see fit. Those options would be to accept the board, excuse me, the bid offered and award to Cavalero Holdings, to either reject the bid offered and take no further action, or either to reject the bid offered and rebid the properties according to how you wish.
Question. This one, we have put it out to bid, is this the third time?
This is the third time.
Third time. And so, the scope of the appraisal that we got, it's my understanding, this was the old property that we looked at, purchased for this building, I think visually.
Right.
And my understanding was back then, there was a lot of rock on it, I mean, tend to even look at it, and did that appraisal, does it take into, I mean, does it take into account the development cost for that million dollar mark, or is it just looking at what land it's kind of selling for?
I believe it's just looking at the land itself.
Doesn't take.
The county attorney may be able to speak to that because they were working with them.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm afraid we don't have really specific recollection, but I don't remember any of those bids really discussing development costs, but they, you know, but it could take into account the usability of the land. I mean, if it was complete floodplain, that would always be taken into account, but now the appraiser would not have done drillings and boring in that context. If it wasn't something visually evident, like a ravine or floodplain, or something that would be demonstrated on the survey, it will, might not be taken into account.
He's not going to do a deal if just like somebody that's actually going to buy it, so.
It just seems, that history there that I've heard, that there was the reason why this building wasn't there, probably multiple reasons, but one of them was the development cost of it. That's when you just see a raw number of what land comps are. I don't know if that takes into consideration, those factors, it may.
Cavalero Holdings, they did respond back to my question, asking what they might have in plan for it. And they don't have any particular plans at this time, they just said that eventually they will develop, but they didn't say what they would be developing there.
Is that what this company does?
I think so, on the research that I saw, I think, are a holdings company, they're with a real estate company that purchases for those folks who might come in and develop.
And that, that is probably within the city limits, correct?
That I don't know.
Mountain City, I thought it was.
I think one side is.
Part of it was, I think.
But the vice side, I don't know if it was a lot.
I thought it was.
Well, thank you.
I think it's time to go portion of it, we're looking at put that, the path, sort of better part through there, with the front part there.
That's on, that's on the right side. I'm going with my [inaudible].
It's very difficult to tell now.
And Melissa, the first two times, there was no bid in this, for this particular property, that's correct.
Other questions for Melissa?
We, we, we have the right to go through our options, we can.
You can accept ideas and award them. You can reject and put it back out to bid again, or you can just reject and do nothing.
Can we counter these people, or not?
You always can negotiate costs. There's nothing in the law, as far as I'm aware of, that says you can't negotiate your purchase cost on this like you would any other solicitation.
Can we do that? You know, that's an interesting question, because this is a bit different because of the surplus nature of real property that has a specific bid requirement. I would want to look into that, and since it's on work session, maybe we could do that before the next voting section. I haven't seen anyone do that before, but that's an interesting concept. And, you know, very often you get a bid that has contingency, and sometimes those things, you know, have to be discussed and considered, but I have not seen an outright negotiation of cost. But let me look into that, I'm not sure that it would not be allowed, but I'd love to confirm that.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have presentation of RFP number 360-19 Legal Services for Dawson County and New Reclamation. Melissa, you can do that as well.
So as everyone is very aware, on February 1st, for a period of 60 days, we went into an agreement with the interim county, which was Gerard and Davis. We then, on February 12th, extended that contract to go through December 31st, 2019. And during that meeting, we talked about putting it out for RFP, just to see what our options might be. Then on November 7th, the board did request that we put this out for RFP, and by the 12th, it was released. And during that time, we also, on November 12th, went into a longer time period with Gerard and Davis, so that we could try to get something awarded. And their extended contract ends January 31st of this year. We released this RFP on November 12th, and it opened on December 6th. Of course, we did this the way we normally do, according to policy, and we received three proposals. This is a very general brief overview of what we requested for scope of services. We requested that they provide general legal counsel, we provided, requested that they provide legal counsel and provide bond counsel. And here, before we get on into anything further, I'd like to say that it was decided to ask for a bid bond in the amount of $15,000. And of that, we only had one particular proposal who responded accordingly, and that was Gerard and Davis. You can either do a bid bond, you can do a certified check, a, I just lost my train of thought. I'm so sorry. Cash certified check, or a cashier's check. And they did the certified check. We did receive a company check from one of our proposers, but that is not an acceptable bid bond. And from our third proposer, we had received an exception to the bid bond altogether. And due to the timing of being able to present this to you and to get our contract before the extended contract with Gerard and Davis was expired, I chose it upon myself to have the evaluating team review all proposals, so that you could decide whether you wanted to waive that bid bond before with any of the other bids. So what I want to show you, and from now on, will be what we came up with, without you making that decision on the bid bond. This is our evaluation committee. As you can see, there's five different individuals from four different departments that has a lot of contact with our attorneys, and purchasing was the facilitator. As you remember, when I came back before you to extend the contract with Gerard and Davis, we did have to ask for clarification. These are the summaries of the clarifications that we did request, and we were able to get the information that we did need. Folks, Holsey, Oliver, Mayhar, I'm not really sure, Gerard and Davis offered pricing, or at least an answer to every one of our requests that we had for cost. They just need to clarify, I just want to make sure y'all understand that. Fox Chandler Homans and McKennon actually left blank spots in the actual price proposal that asked for different items, one of those being bond counsel and some miscellaneous costs. And I did want to also point out here that we do have a local, a local small business initiative that you can use to give 3% credit, if you will, to a local vendor. However, our policy states that that can't be for anything that's 100,000 or more, and we know that this probably would be, so that is not included here. With everyone being evaluated, these are our scores. This is from all the different evaluators in all of the categories that we requested. The weight for the evaluation was 85% technical, with only 15 being on price. This is the overall summary for all scores. Holsey, and these, the vendors are put in just in the order that I received their packages, they're not in any particular order otherwise. Holsey, Oliver, and Mayhar, their total score was 1 of 90, they received 75 technical and cost was 15. Fox Chandler Homans and McKennon received a cost of 13, I mean, a cost score of 13, with a total score of 85. And then Gerard and Davis received a cost score of 14, technical score of 81, with their total cost, their total score being 95. That's hard to say. So with the fact that we received, we requested a lot of different pricing, there's only certain things that you can do apple to apple for, and that's going to be for the hourly rate, and that will be for the partners, associate attorneys, paralegal staff, and administrative staff. So when you do this, the easiest way to do apples to apples is to ask for one unit of whatever the product is that you're asking for, which would be one hour for each of those categories. And to be able to see this, so that you could see that, their cost per hour, if you will, the, I put down on the bottom, a letter, sorry, the summary scores each of their pricing. Holsey, Oliver, Mayhar, their sum total was 920. Fox Chandler Homans and McKennon's sum total is 1,060. Gerard and Davis' sum total is 1,000. And Gerard and Davis also wanted to offer us an annual cap of $250,000 for the general legal services for the year of 2020.
And that, for clarification, that's not an hourly charge, that is taking a scenario and getting even.
Right, that would be saying that if we had, Jamison needed them to look at and organize, and to each one of those job titles that I talked to you about, one hour to work on it.
Right.
This is what it would cost.
Yeah.
Okay. But then there's also miscellaneous costs that would also add to that hourly cost, and that's the next category that we'll address. That's very hard to put in to the weighted score, because it's all different. Everybody does their own thing, and which they have that right to do, but we need to know what that is, because that is an overall cost of what their service would be for you. And without having to read all of this, I'm just going to highlight a couple of the things that we saw that stood out. Holsey, Oliver, and Mayhar, they stated that there would be an administrative cost if there were overtime. They felt like it would be very rare, there still could possibly be, if they worked past their five o'clock, there would be overtime cost to us. There was not a fee given for that overtime, because I'm just assuming that each administrative cost, staff might have their own pay, it's just that that would be an additional cost. All of the court filing fees and that sort of thing is something that is always normally charged back to us, that isn't a cost to us. If it's $50 to file a fee, they're not going to take that out of their angle, their hourly cost to us, it will come back to us as a cost. Holsey, Oliver, and Mayhar offered pricing for mileage. So tonight, if they were attendants of this meeting, they were charged that hourly rate of whom they were attended, plus the mileage for the, whatever is at the Irish rate at the time, I think that's .55 cents now, or 54, somewhere in there, so times however many miles back and forth, that would be added into their overall cost. So these are the things that we needed to make sure you were aware of. And because not all pricing that was requested out of the bid, or the RFP was given to us by, I'm sorry, let me go back to that, I can't say their name correctly, Fox Chandler Homans and McKennon, they are declared non-responsive. It is in our policy, very clearly stated, not only our policy, but in the state policy and pretty much everywhere you go, that responsive means that you gave me exactly what was in requested of you in the bid. They had to state that there's cost for bond counsel, and for all of the court fees, costs, transcript fees, that sort of thing, plus a 10 cents per copies, which was not on their bid when we opened, or when I opened it on December 6th, which, not actually December 6th, I'm not sure, it was whenever the others finished their evaluation, which honestly, I don't remember that date. So with all of that being said, staff respectfully request that the board accept the proposals as they're submitted, to award a contract to Gerard and Davis LLP with the initial term beginning February 1st, 2020, to run December 31st, 2020, with the option of four one-year renewals.
Questions for Melissa?
Time running out on that, we need to move that to the six o'clock voting session, depending on, either that, or you're going to have to vote to extend the term, or wait until February 6th.
Does that email that we got from Joey enter into this at all?
To explain it all.
Did you have any further questions?
Yeah, I understood that, but I don't think it was on a, I thought it says something about an appeal, or something about it, I don't know.
Legally, a protest cannot happen until after you award it.
Okay.
So if you award this, then he does have that right for policy, state, everything, to be able to appeal that. However, if you do not declare them non-responsive, because they did not give us all pricing, then you have the ability for the other two proposers who did do it correctly to also protest. And then it would be a continual protest, not having anybody full-time. But you do have that right, it's completely up to you, however you decide to do. But in order to call him non-responsive, not only just because of pricing, but also because of the bid bond, you would need to waive the requirement of that bid bond, and then to waive his non-responsive action, and that would be going against your policy as well.
Chairman.
Yes.
A bid, pretty common practice, any bond, I mean, any bid, whether it's a vehicle or equipment or whatever.
Right.
If they're not on time, or if they don't answer the questions or provide information to request, it's not responsive, that would be just any bid.
It could be any bid, that's right. You have to, that's the whole point of it being a sealed bid, with a time and a date to give you the response. The clarification was answered in a timely manner, but the problem with that being, they needed to add cost. The cost of the transcripts, which was not there, the cost of the copy, which they said, depending on if it was a big open records versus a not big, how many copies would it be before you start charging, and as well as the fact of the bond counsel.
And if we, if it's non-responsive, all the other bids are already open.
Yes.
So this is open record, everybody knows the prices, so if we allow somebody to come back to you afterwards, they would know everybody else's price.
Right, now they do, but we did follow the open records in holding all of this back until this meeting, until we could get everything, all the answers from all three proposals.
Other questions? We'll move to the voting session. All right, I think we'll do the six o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have presentation of RFP number 355-19 Debris Removal and Disposal Services Award Recommendation, Public Works Director David McKee.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the next two items on our agenda are standard service contracts, in which I hope I never am before you to ask to initiate those contracts.
Me too, me too.
The first of which is debris removal and disposal services. Real quick, what this, and then we'll go through our slides, our slides here. If you recall, the ice storm back in 2015, that's the most recent event that we had, that we utilized the debris removal services. Sears was the company that was, that we currently have the contract with, that also did the debris removal. They come in with these big giant trucks, and the debris that we're talking about is trees, I suppose it could be structures or anything that's in the right of way, it's removed from the right of way, it's hauled to a location, and then there's another part of this service, and we'll talk about that in just a second, and what we do with that debris at the end. Current contracts in Crapper Gulf, and then Sears, and they've been extended through February 28th, to allow for us to establish this contract. Again, we wanted to make sure we have somebody under contract, our Mercy Operations Plan and Hazard Management Plan states that we'll keep somebody under contract for these services, so we wanted to make sure we had somebody under contract, until such time we can get this, get through this process. Myself, and then two representatives from Fire DMS, we wish to award this to a single vendor, and a lot of that is just streamlining that process. When we need this service, we don't really need to be reviewing multiple different proposals. We need to be worrying about getting our staff out safely and getting the roads back open, so we want to, we want this to go to a single vendor. This, this will be zero cost to the county unless we have to utilize the service, so there's no cost to have them on standby or anything like that. What this will do is it will allow us to fast track this process. If you'll recall, when Hurricane Irma moved through, we were able to get 85% payout because we got the right of ways cleaned up, right of way cleaned up, within the first 30 days. So this will allow us to fast track some of that cleanup process, and we get reimbursement back from the federal government or state government, and will allow us to fast track that process for a shorter time. No reason to have these folks on standby. We follow our typical acquisition strategy, we did receive four proposals. I will say that the companies that propose on this, and the next item that we have, they are very specialized companies, they spend their, they make their money really all around the world following disasters and cleaning up after disasters, in Puerto Rico, or wherever, Abco, they're doing disaster, so these are very, very specific companies. This is not a great contractor that's down the street that has a little bit of equipment and can do that, these are big time, big time companies. We talked a little bit about the scope of services, one of the other items I want to note here is that we're going to have staff on site from this company within eight hours of notification. So if we have an event, myself and Chief Thompson and Chief Dooley, we're going to start making assessments, just like the thunderstorm we had the other night, we're out, as soon as it's over, making assessments. When we make the call, okay, we need you on site, they'll be here within eight hours to help us start a command location for the event, for the event. Debris removal, debris processing, and the documentation and records. Having gone through the ice storm and then Hurricane Irma, it is unbelievable the amount of records that you have to provide, and then reprovide, and then reprovide back to the federal government to get paid. And I stress that, because this company, they specialize in just that, keeping up with those records and doing.
So they will do that?
Yes.
Isn't that wonderful?
Absolutely. And the next item that we're going to discuss is even more wonderful, should we need to utilize that service, and we'll talk about that in just a second. Then here's our evaluation committee, Chief Thompson, Chief Dooley, and myself, Melissa assisted in facilitating this process. We're going to go through every single one of these, that's a joke, just kidding. So what this is, is this is, this is the technical scores, much like you've seen in the last other proposals, we each scored these individually, and you see our technical scores there on the right-hand column. The, we also have the financial scores, and just like the standard review, we, we as staff conducted our review, we all turned in our technical scores, Melissa opened up the financial, and you can see in that second to last column on the right there is the financial and cost proposals, and then the total scores. And note that Graham County Land Company is the highest score with a total of 81. Something to note right here, they priced 48 different line items, whether it be removing a stump, removing a tree, removing a hanger, removing dangerous trees, there's a number of different things, all those are items that are classified by FEMA, and we get paid separate amounts for, so they all priced what those would be. That's the reason for, you know, some people look at this as right, and we have them priced 48 line items, just moving the grade, because we get paid for every stump, every tree, every hanger, every building.
And it's a requirement if you want to be reimbursed.
That's correct.
By FEMA.
And part of those documentation is you have to document where the location and the size of every single one of those.
Wouldn't we shoot GPS last?
We did, that's a fee we require, you have to. Hurricane Irma, we actually used GIS and used some, a little bit different technology, but we still had to provide the exact same information for, for that. So staff request, the Board of Commissioners, to accept the proposals submitted and award the contract to Graham County Land Company. And again, a note right here, this contract, I hope we never have to activate it, but should we have to, the cost will not be incurred until it's activated.
Before that was created, yeah.
You were going to ask that. I think North Carolina.
North or South Carolina.
It's either North or South Carolina, yeah.
I'd say Graham County.
Gary.
Yeah.
Gary, North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So are they just subcontacting this out when the event happens, is that what they did?
So they, they have a Graham County, and most of them have a core group of trucks, boom trucks, and trailers, that they, that they maintain, and they, they put that in the proposal, but then yes, they'll also sub out, and there is a lot of haulers that have their trucks set up that just go around and work for these folks. A small event may only be handled by Graham, but if it's a larger event, then it could be handled by Graham's staff, and they assure us that their staff will be here, but it could be a subcontractor that's actually doing the hauling from locations to wherever that. from the locations to wherever that debris field, the debris stacking would be.
Other questions for David? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Presentation of RFP three five six dash nineteen, debris monitoring service recommendations. David?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The debris monitoring service is much like our, our previous slides that we went through. While she's bringing that up, so the, there's two, there's two aspects to the debris removal. There's the, the initial onset, the debris's in the right way. There's cleaning all that debris up, taking it to a location and documenting all that. The second part of that is monitoring those services. I, I keep referring back to the ice storm of two thousand fifteen. We elected at that time to monitor those services ourself in-house. And Mr. Hedley can, can confirm this, and I don't want to speak for him, but that cost more money than it would have had we have paid a monitoring service. It took all of our staff, all of our public works staff, and we weren't able to allocate that, those staff to do anything else other than monitor this event. So what this bid is for is, is monitoring services. And much like the removal services, there are companies that travel the world and specialize strictly in monitoring debris cleanup services. Just talked about that. So, so what we elected to do is when we rebid this debris removal, we also elected to bid out the debris monitoring services. And what this is, when the truck comes in, well, let me back up. While there's a truck out there cleaning up, there is somebody from the debris monitoring service that's physically with each location, taking the documentation. They, when they bring it back to, let's say they bring it back to the transfer station, that's our, that's our location. Typically, it comes to in our staging area. When they get there, there's physically somebody that verifies what's in the truck is indeed to X number of square yards. It's dumped, they verify the truck's empty when it leaves. Every bit of that is documented and submitted to FEMA before we can get paid. Just like before, i- if we don't utilize their services, there's no cost to the county to have them on standby. We put winter storm here, but it could be a tornado that moves through. It could be a hurricane, anything that, that's, that would pile debris in county property. Talked a little bit about this next line item. The last time we utilized this, last two times, both Hurricane Irma and the ice storm, we took this role on ourself. Irma wasn't as widespread as the ice storm, so it wasn't as big a deal. And, and I, I want to key in on this fast track real quick because the, the, the federal government specifies a number of days. If we can get the event cleaned up within the first thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, and then beyond that is a standard fee. The amount of money goes down the further you get from the event, that you get reimbursement back. So when we fast track this, we have the debris monitors and the debris removal folks on. They're here within eight hours. They're removing debris. Our goal is to get the most we can give back, so our taxpayers don't come out of pocket for it.
So time is literally money.
It is. One hundred percent, yes, that's correct.
And based on the percentage, like thirty days, you get a bigger percentage of that money back. Forty-five days, you get less. Sixty days, you get even less. And that's, you know, the reason we have these services, so we don't have to go out trying to figure out how far we are getting done through.
And probably helps cover our overtime costs too, when we're dealing with an event like that. Assume that you're ramping up staffing, which costs us more, which is a function of. Well, there's, there's almost always other damage too, other than just debris removal. There's road damage. If we're monitoring this, we're not able to go fix the roads and fix that damage that's there. We also have to document that, so that we can get reimbursement for those items as well. But if we're monitoring, then, then the repairs to the other infrastructure comes second.
And one good thing about these guys is they did this every day.
Yeah, this is one thing.
They did. And I worked for them, does any, what's they on that form? Because I mean, now we've done a small event, and for them to come back to us. And that's, that would, that would be on that timeline where we get that thing back.
Yeah.
And get reworked for it.
So as bid according policy, we did receive two proposals. We've talked a lot about the scope, and I won't go through that. We talked about the line by line there, but we talked about having somebody here within eight hours. That's matching our debris removal. They, they, a lot of these companies, and these two both had some proprietary software that they used that spits out these forms for FEMA. So they do have software that's specifically tailored to this. They will provide the last item there. We make sure that they provide the updates to our county debris monitoring coordinator. That is whomever, I believe, Chief Thompson or whoever's operating the emergency operations with staff, with staff, and say, oh, this individual's going to be our coordinator. I mean, also the public information specialists, and that's just keeping the public involved and not involved, but informed as to what is going on.
You think all these companies know each other?
Oh, absolutely.
I would assume they work together with me.
Absolutely. And, and perhaps even subcontract each other in a, the large event. Evaluation committee was just like before, Chief Thompson, Chief Dooley and myself, and then Melissa facilitated that. Just like our last one here is our scores, both financial and our technical scores. And you can see there that Debris Tech LLC. That's the highest score. And with the financial proposals as well, broken down, a little simpler chart there. Ninety-one was the Debris Tech score, and then eighty-two.
Is it LLC or Inc. Inc. is it not?
Did I say LLC? It all does it as Inc.? Well, perhaps it's about to set up.
Okay. Well, we won't get the right name.
We will. It's, it is Inc. So staff requests that the Board of Commissioners accept the proposals submitted and award this contract to Debris Tech Inc. And before we vote, I will verify that it is, that it is indeed Inc. or LLC. But Debris Tech Inc. And this contract again will be activated, and there'll be no cost to the county until such time we have a disaster and need their services. We will move forward at the next voting session. I think we are under contract freely in the February. We're in the, we're in the contract from February twenty eighth from debris removal. So we do have time. There's no need to move this tonight.
How often do we rebid it? You might say that.
I did not say that because I don't know. I think this is a fifth year since we did it.
This is a professional service. We do this every five years.
Every five years. So this is a five-year, one year with four. Four new ones, yeah. Obviously, we got our exit clauses, if need be, for the point of.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David. Next up, we have a presentation, Georgia Emergency Management Agency and Homeland Security Agency Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement versus Service Director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. The agreement that's before you has been vetted through the council. Sent it over to them when I received the document from GEMA back in November. Allowed them time to go through it. They're partners at the firm, just confirmed it as a standard format that's out there. Really no registrations or language changes in it. To renew the previous agreement that Dawson County had entered into, set to expire April of two thousand twenty, so we're just kind of getting it ahead of the game and everything else. This will be for a four-year agreement. The basic concept here is that Dawson County, the Dawson Emergency Services along with GEMA Homeland Security, they're participating partners in the statewide mutual aid agreement for the last four years. Purpose of this agreement serves two primary functions. The first is to provide that assistance and support in managing a disaster, similar to what Commissioner He was just speaking of, that occurs within side of Dawson County or any other participating agencies within the statewide mutual aid. Second, identify those parties authorized to approve and provide those resources that request it from another contact party. Over the years, we have been very fortunate to provide resources to many of our partners across the state of Georgia. And most recently, Hurricane Michael, we were able to deploy people to those areas. And so it's one of those good things, if it ever hits us and happens to us, we're going to get those resources back. This agreement does identify agencies operating outside of their normal jurisdiction. In the event that a disaster becomes federally declared, it does supersede any local or state declarations that have already been made. Those terms and conditions will be outlined as such by the federally declared event. At that point, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from Chief Thompson? Questions?
Good thing about this too, if your equipment gets torn, or your gear gets torn, like, plus, no question asked, like, if they inspect it. All right, Chief, if they get that and inspect it, would you like? If you got a problem with the tire, that could be your tire.
A lot of times, before you, like. So they, they go through a process of typically what they call a demobilization phase of an incident. So when your, your people have been deployed, they've been there. They go through a demo phase where they begin to really start securing everything. So they check their gear, if there's anything that needs to be repaired, they document it at that time. If it's equipment, whether it was a vehicle or something, that we send, they turn around and make sure that the oil's been changed, they've serviced the vehicles, and send them back to you.
There's process.
Just on those trips.
You mix and odes.
We're right at the oil change.
Say that to her.
It's the whole thing.
Getting hot up here.
Other questions for Chief Thompson? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a presentation of request to accept Georgia Forestry Commission volunteer fire assistance fifty-fifty grant. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Presented this to you all back in the fall of two thousand nineteen. We applied for it. We received notification just before the actual Christmas holidays. We had received this grant. We have money in budget. Our cost match here is five thousand. So we're just requesting that you all approve us to move forward and make these necessary purchases. And the timeline there is the, to apply for the rework by equal seventeen. Answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the chief? Who wrote the grant? Who wrote the grant?
I did.
Good job. Well, I understand there's all kinds of languages and words and buzzwords and all this you got to know.
And each grant's great here.
Is it?
Some grants are two or three pages, and some grants are fifty to a hundred pages.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Did you say this was in our budget?
Okay. Let's move on. Presentation of request to apply for Emergency Management Performance Grant. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, again, this is a, a grant that Dawson County has enjoyed for many years. Again, it's a fifty-fifty match grant, issued, I think, of emergency management grant. Our cost match would be seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. We have that money in budget. We're requesting permission to go ahead and submit. And we are looking at the timeline to get that done. So if you can give me a head nod tonight, we'll get that through. This is really kind of going in, in GEMA's, if you remember back in September, I think I submitted a request to do the GEMA grants portal. So a lot of this stuff is going through a portal in an online version, whereas a lot of it used to be handwritten. So the timing process, there's learning curves that we're all going through on this. But I'll answer any questions that you all may have. This is typically what we use to fund our SWIFT nine-on-one, which we've upgraded to a new program called RAIN. It's the alerting program in the event that we have significant weather, a shooter situation, anything of that nature. We can push that stuff out to those citizens that have enrolled in the program. This is impartial, right? Correct. We can cut the polygon out, and we have employees coming in. We can cut the polygon, and we'll only get those individuals in the affected area.
Let me take this thing down to street level. You just need to notify one street.
Do we need to, we need to get some voting session?
Yes.
We can head nod and remove it over to the voting session.
Just to go down, that's just, it might be a violation to go down.
What do you all want to do?
Head it out?
Yeah. We'll ratify.
And you approve it.
We'll ratify the six.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
Head nod.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have County Manager Report.
Thank you, Chairman. We have the Commissioners. This is a small report, KDCater reports for the month of December. We've got that packet, a list of the agreements that have been signed are also in your packet. One of the things I did want to mention to you, and I don't know that everybody's aware of it, I know some of the public may not be aware of it, but the Rotary Club annually does a Employee of the Year for the county and for emergency services, and then also for the city's Employee of the Year. Many of you know that the Rotary has consistently contributed funds towards needed projects or improvements, you know, within the county, such as the splash pad and now the pickleball, I believe, pickleball courts. And they just do tremendous work in the community. This is a recognition that I enjoy annually, that we have an opportunity to select the staff members who receive that award. And that, that selection is made through the senior staff members. They present the names to me, and then from there, we make a selection and then I make an ultimate decision on who will get that award. Chris Rowland with Parks and Breath received it this year. You may have seen it in the newsletter, and the public certainly go online with the newsletter as well. Was recognized this year as the Employee of the Year for the county. The epic program, and Matt can certainly speak more to this than I can. It's just been a tremendous program since it started, just, what, six months ago or so?
One year.
One year now, okay, so it's been a year. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers have gone from just a small group of twenty to over a hundred now. And these are disadvantaged folks that, that they're recognized and have an opportunity to participate in events that other folks participate in. So it's a tremendous, there was a tremendous need for it in the county, and, and Chris Beer headed that project with the support of her staff members. And so I want to recognize her, unfortunately, she's not here tonight, but I did want to make a public announcement to that effect. Also, in EMS, Jeff Bailey, who is here tonight, was recognized as well for the tremendous work that he has done in the community as well. So I want to congratulate both of them, and wanted to make the public and the commission aware that that award was, was given and received. The Public Works and Fleet Services crews are in the, in the process now moving into the new building. They got the CO, I believe it was today was. So they got their CO today, it was issued. We look forward to hosting a rooming cutting that will also be advertised online to the public and grand opening ceremony out there very soon, the next few weeks. You will see that, and they've done a tremendous job out there. Kudos to Public Works and Fleet for their support and assistance in those projects, specifically on Mr. Young. Also, for the public's knowledge, the county and the city met Tuesday and jointly approved to include a transportation special purpose local option sales tax referendum, which would be on May nineteenth ballot. If approved by the voters, and that is the voters, that T-SLOSS would take effect in October of two thousand twenty. So we, we appreciate the city's support in that as well. County offices will be closed on Monday for Martin Luther King Junior Day. And that concludes my report.
Questions of the county manager?
Oh, can, I, I want to ask about, you know, this, I can't be a fan, I can't think of it. This Eagle Scout guy, the Livingstone, that was doing the, and I can't pronounce it. Larcher, yeah. How is that coming?
He's still in fundraising actress. There's a, there's a period after he's awarded to proceed, there's a period of, was it six months or so, that he has to raise enough money to get his project started, so he's still in the fundraising project. We've not dug anything. We've not broken ground yet.
Okay.
It's still in the dug.
Yeah, I talked to his mom about it the other day. I ran into her at grocery store supplement, and she said he's working on it, and I think they're planning this summer of being ready to go. Another special one. Another Special Olympics group that uses the bocce ball to their practice, I think they start practicing in the summer and they hope to add it ready to go before it starts. That's what she said.
Did you take the challenge, that Julie challenge, help us to give him some money?
I did.
Okay. I guess you.
I think I doubled what you did.
I did.
I already gave it before we did that.
Okay. And I think I want to, fire station eight, what, what's going on? Things to be kind of in a stalemate. Okay. Cause I don't think that much is going on.
Physically on site, there's not, there's been a lot happening behind the scenes. We've had to work with the state environmental health department on the SEPTIC system. We have received approval, we've been receiving some middles and everything and the building has been ordered. What I'll tell you is the steel's coming, so the site will be ready. As you can imagine, the weather has been less than cooperative to allow for them to get started, but we're, we're moving forward. Lot been happening behind the scenes and Brian is, is daily contacting and contacting the contractor.
And the SEPTIC tank issue, did I read this, some sort of, is that resolved?
Yes, yes ma'am, it's resolved. It was, it was, it was a matter of location and where the fill lines were in relation to, as you imagine, we have a fire station, we can't put that, those lines right outside the door, so, but yes, it's all been resolved.
You know, red irons still will go up quick.
Yes, and it's, and I'll also note that it's all been resolved within the budget that this board has approved.
I just know it just looks, I'm glad something's going on behind the scenes because you can go live.
Looks like a rough bit, yeah.
Yeah, it, it doesn't look like, and I thought, hmm, what if somebody forgot about this place?
No, no. Absolutely not.
Okay. And Dawn's not here, is she?
She was.
She was here, she had a phone call.
Yeah, okay, I was just wondering about that respite program. I know it started in January, and I wanted to ask you, I'm sorry, I have a full question.
Go ahead.
On this license plate reader and accessories for the share, did, did this come out of your hundred thousand dollar allotment, does that ring?
No, 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 not that. It just gives me ability to sign off on it for the share.
Okay, so you have to proof this for the share?
Everything that comes from over there, that's, and what's on there, I sign off on as well.
You have to, okay.
With the approval of the share.
So you had a couple of things, but this comes out this budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, that's what I want. Thanks.
Other questions for the county manager? County attorney report.
I do not have a public report, but I do have several things for executive session.
Okay, and those would be under what category?
Personnel and land acquisition and litigation, all three tonight.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session.
Agreed.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines. Seconded by Commissioner Fossett, discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that is approved. Any anticipated, Mr. Davis, any anticipated votes coming out of those?
No, thanks.
No votes, okay, so it will take about five minutes and we will go into executive session. We do appreciate your attendance and our voting session will begin at six o'clock. You are welcome to, to attend that as well.